Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 7th, 2006. We have a forum with six of seven members of council present. We have the course, the minutes of the regular session held March 20th, 2006, and April 3rd, 2006.
We adopt the minutes of March 20th, 2006, and April 3rd, 2006.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting, accepting the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been adopted. Communications, member Sands.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the auditor's reports for the month of March.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the March auditor's reports?
Aye.
Those opposed, the reports have been accepted. Reports in communication from other elected officials. Director Hunter?
No report in open session.
Okay. Mayor Abel?
Just two things tonight. First, we had, Personnel Director and I met about the applications for city planner. We'd received a total of five applications. Two of them in-state, three out-of-state. Didn't really feel the applicant pool was large enough, so we extended that until May 22nd. So we'll be a little more delayed there, but those advertisements were out this weekend in case anyone saw them. The second item I had is I met with the engineering firm on Columbus Road for both the sewer line project and water line projects. Staff is doing the final review on that. What the engineers submitted to us was everything to go in for a permit to install PTI. And I'll have a copy of 11 by 17 up for council early this week if anyone cares to look at it. But it would probably behoove at the next city services meeting, using those contractors' estimates, start the process for borrowing the funds to be able to do this. As you recall, the Columbus Road sewer line probably has a price tag on it of about $900,000 left. But that was eligible for FEMA reimbursement, but we have to upfront that and then get reimbursed. So we're gonna have to borrow the funds on that, and we'll also have to borrow some money on the water projects too. Because there's two of those projects. I've got one ready, and the other one will be pretty soon. Questions?
On Sunset, a couple of residents asked about the sewer line. Would they have, can they change, I guess if some of them pump uphill onto Sunset rather than, can they switch lines and will they be switching lines? I guess is the question.
They won't really be switching any of their regular laterals. If they're on the upper portion of Sunset, I think they're already coming in and with gravity feed down to where Sunsets and Eric come together. Because that's, the path of it will be on the hillside side of Columbus Road, and will cross over at Sunset, and then go down Eric to Third Street, and then follow right away for Third Street for there. Some of that will be a bore on the steepest part of it, because we don't want to disturb the hillside. Plus, before the bid happens, we've already lined up about $5,000 in the budget for soil boring to be done on the Third Street area to make sure what we have soil-wise. But we'd probably do that on a, build it, cover it the next day. So it isn't going to be, especially if it's trench with a trench box work. Every time the trench box moves, we would do the backfill, so we'd have the least amount of disruption to the soil.
Okay, is there a contact person that they want to ask questions? Scott Lambert or Ray?
Scott or Ray, either one. I mean, we've already, I think, met with Ed Newman, who's the prime principal property owner there. He's seen a copy of the rough plans that's set before this one, and went through what we felt tree-wise and earth disturbance, and explained to him the geotech work and the other things, because he had raised some questions before. So we just went directly to him and gave him some of the information.
Okay, Jeff Bearline approached me, that's why I'm asking. That's just one person.
Some of those on that bottom side of Sunset, depending upon their property lines, may wish to, but right now, I can't, there's only three or four actual connections that would have to be moved around. But there would be, I don't, I'd have to check on the depth of that in Sunset to be positive. Because I know that the, I asked today about the pumping station on Columbus Road, and its depth will be 28 feet. So that's pretty seriously deep from the standpoint of the pump house.
Okay.
But that's why I wanted to bring up a set of the plans, let anybody take a look at them, and then if we need to meet with the staff and such. But financing is, because even if we submit everything to EPA, it's going to be at least a few weeks before they would approve the PTI. But I want to get ready to bid so that we're heavy into this summer, construction-wise, rather than into the fall.
There's plans already in the office, are those the ones you're talking about right now?
Could be, they could have brought them up today. I know I talked to Ray about it.
Last week, there were some plans. This must be an older one.
These are a set that they delivered this morning.
Okay, that's, okay. Okay, and I see it working at Sunset Slips already.
They're up there working, yes.
The big metal things, okay.
It's hard to not notice those.
No.
Nancy?
I was wondering also if when we discuss this next week, you could come up with some general statement about how we're going to finish the surface where Third Street is not developed yet. I mean, are we going to pave it? Are we going to gravel it? That's a question I've heard from neighbors.
Okay.
Okay?
I believe primarily we're going to gravel it, because we talked today at the meeting that where we're making the cross and where we're working on Eric, that surface isn't real good, and so we've got in there an inch and a half asphalt to repave that once it's done. And I think we'll also be doing some repaving on Sunset and across Columbus Road. But there are those. And then I think in the sets for the water lines, we'll be on the downhill side of Columbus Road as we're bringing that up through. Right now, we have in there to replace that sidewalk between Sunset and Second Street.
Yeah, the concern that I've heard quite is the Third Street being unopened, it being opened, and if people start using it as a bike path and such. That's what I've heard. That's the source of the question. Okay, so.
Well, we'd like it as limited access, just from the standpoint that we don't want a whole lot of people in through there.
That's exactly what they want.
We're talking about a gate-type situation, et cetera, but you want at least some degree of surface to be able to go in there and check manholes, because there's a number of manholes set in that section of it.
Right, and I guess that they had heard that it was going to be paved, and, well, they heard all kinds of things, but they were concerned.
Oh, there's all kinds of rumors.
I know. But you know, the main question is how much access is wanted and they don't want it.
Very, we don't either.
Okay, all right. See you next week. Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Mayor. City Auditor Kathy Heck?
No report.
Okay. There is one other item I need to mention, and that is that a meeting luncheon has been set up for council members and President McDavis on May 2nd at 11:45 a.m. And frankly, today I forgot to make the final arrangements on the location, but anyone that would like to attend will have that out, and the city clerk or clerk of council will have that. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 2706 and ordinance amending ordinance O-11405, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-2706.
Second.
O-2706 makes another effort to clean up the last of the fees that were caused by the study of how much we should have for code. And I'm sure Debbie isn't here, because she's amended it a few times. I'll tell you, I'll face it yet another. No, that's not true. I was exaggerating. But anyway, it is, one of the things that I requested was that we clarify what a rooming house is with respect to housing code fees. That's what this also does.
Are there further comments on ordinance 2706? Member Wild?
It includes many other things for like plan amendments, subdivisions, and applications and other changes, as well as zoning map amendments and zoning text amendments. So it's really just trying to bring us up to speeds that cost us money, activities that cost us money.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2706?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3006, an ordinance authorizing a service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for construction of roadway curbs and sidewalks, ramps in the vicinity of the middle school and declaring an emergency. Member Flowers?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 3006.
Second.
This is an ordinance for the middle school, middle school project, and I know that we've already discussed the bid, the opening and the closing, but I'll remind council, we advertised on Sunday, looking at the bid to open up May 11th, and want to start around June 12th, so that we are done around mid-August before school starts. And I know that also in addition that there will be some sidewalk replacement, and the mayor's informed me that those individuals have been contacted, and I saw in the departmental activity report that Ron Lucas is continuing to contact those residents. So.
Other comments on ordinance 3006? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3306, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an emergency shelter grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Development and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Good Works Inc. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-3306.
Second.
This is an annual application that the mayor makes to the Department of Development for some funds that we administer, and which are used by Good Works for their homeless shelter. In the past year, I think it was about $58,000, but until the application is approved, we won't know for sure.
Are there further, excuse me, are there further comments on ordinance 33? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3406, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year '06-'07 Drug Abuse Resistance Education, DARE Law Enforcement Grant. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-3406.
Second.
Again, this is an annual application that we're authorizing the mayor to make. These funds would pay for up to 50% of a police officer's salary if he or she spends time in the classroom working with students in the DARE program.
Are there further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3406?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3506, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year '07, federal fiscal year '06. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-3506.
Second.
Again, an annual application. This is for block grant, these are for block grant funds, non-competitive block grants. In the past few years, we've gotten about $100,000 for these grants, which we've used for some of the mass-to-arm traffic signals in the Uptown area. We've had some other suggestions, or this used maybe sidewalks, development along Simpson Avenue.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3506?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Oh, my personal favorite ordinance, ordinance 3606, here we go. For the last time, if there's a God in heaven. An ordinance authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the USDOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, is authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 USC, Section 52, pardon me, 5311. Financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January 1, '07 through December 31, 2007. Member Patterson, don't you dare amend this.
Well, that's what we were just discussing. There would be a special pleasure just having a little amendment, but I don't think it's necessary at this time. This is just our yearly ordinance to allow the mayor to enter into the applications and agreements with the, for transportation through the FTA and ODAN, and this is for '07. And as I have pointed out before, the total grant funding or the total cost of the projects is approximately $400,000, of which actually less than, quite a bit less than $50,000 comes out of our coppers. So it's one of our best bargains. And I might add that I did talk to the manager of Courtyard, and they just began their nighttime runs that they are contracting for a couple of weeks ago. And the first weekend, they had 66 riders the first night and 135 the second night, and were quite surprised. And the manager there told me that she is actively talking to some of the other managers to see if we can't widen that sooner rather than later. So this is money well spent.
When were those runs being made?
They're to 9:30 on weeknights and 2:30 on the weekends.
Very good. Other comments?
Well, I didn't move for adoption.
After all that?
Mr. Preston, I moved for adoption of O-3606. It was all that tailing thing.
And his member Flowers did talk that.
She's the one that led me astray, Esther.
Member Wild?
I think she should go through the title.
Anyone that misses such a thing. Are there any other comments on that? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 3606?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for second reading, O-3106, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11, Chapter 11.05 Licenses and Chapter 11.08 Taxicab. Ordinance 3706, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 9, General Regulations, Chapter 9.14 Clean Indoor Air.
Mr. President, I move to amend O-3706.
Second.
The current, this is an ordinance which basically sets some rules for signage in the new Huka establishments. And as it is written currently, it says that the health warning signage must be clearly visible to people entering the establishment and must be visibly posted in every room where smoking is permitted on an eight-and-a-half-by-five-inch sign or larger in 26-point font, which is basically this sign. And so I move to amend it to say that the point size, and I can read the language in a second, should be larger, and this is an example of a, if we want to be exact, a 48-point headline in 36-point type. And it was recommended earlier, right before the meeting, that basically that the sign is 48-point type, and I'd like to specify that the warning is set out as a headline. So basically, it would be similar to this.
Could you hold the other one up again?
Yeah. This is the one currently in the ordinance.
I definitely can't read that one, but I can certainly read the other one.
Okay. And I think even if you were close to this one, it could be easily kind of hidden in a corner, or you probably wouldn't notice it. And this is a very noticeable way of warning people. So is there amendment, right? It's amendment.
The amendment is.
The amendment is to basically cross out the words on an eight-and-a-half-by-11-by-five-and-a-quarter sign or larger. Cross that off, because we're not going to specify the size of the paper. But just say in font size 48 or greater, and then add after greater with the word "warning" set out as a headline.
Okay.
Okay.
You have a motion, a motion and a second?
The language is exactly the way it's written in the ordinance. It's simply a larger sign.
Okay, so everything's 46, 48.
That was the recommendation. Yes, I can go for that, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 3706, basically going to a 48-inch point font instead of?
26.
26.
Right.
Is there further discussion? Any, no?
I would just like to say that I am glad this was brought up, and I encourage that change be made.
Can you state your name, just for the record?
Tanya Engelberger, Athens City County Health Department.
Thank you, Tanya. Other comments? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Ordinance 3906, an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations for property located on Carroll Road owned by Barney and Carroll Boozer to allow a minor law slip. Ordinance 4106, an ordinance amending ordinance O-8204, establishing a fee schedule for solid waste and recycling, Title V of the Athens City Code. Ordinance 4206, an ordinance amending ordinance O-12605, Exhibit A, authorizing staffing levels, and Exhibit C, non-union fee scale. Ordinance 4306, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Now, ordinances for first reading, O-4506, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs, introduced by council member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance, comes through each year, in the amount of $125,000 for the annual street paving and repairs. The areas in which will be street paving and repairing, we went over on the street tour. Some of the areas include the High Street, the west, or by West State Park, let's see here, up by Sunset Slip areas. So we're doing some of the annual paving and repairing, and that's for, the amount is $125,000.
Any other comments on ordinance 45? Member Wild?
This is a little bit less, but that's because we're spending the rest of the money on bigger budget items like Homeroe Road, like the intersection on Union and?
682.
682. So we've got, and Middle School. So we've got some major ones, and this is the rest of them.
Okay. Other comments? Ordinance 4606, an ordinance authorizing engineering of the East State Street Bike Path Extension from Cook Drive toward Stroud's Run Drive, Project Number 223, introduced by council member Flowers.
Okay, if council members remember, last week, the mayor had brought this up to us, the extension for the bike path over by Cook Drive. He brought to me this evening the project, the layout of the project costs that I'll pass around to council members, which includes one of the grants we applied for, which was the Clean Ohio Funds Grant. We are hoping to go to bid on this by next year. The total cost will be no more than $85,000. And I'll go ahead and pass this break down around for council members to look at. Their other question?
Other comments? Member Bishop?
At the last conversation with council, there was a discussion of these flexible poles in the middle of bike paths. And I just want to raise some attention to that. I don't know whether it could be specified, and this is a question, that only those be used in this bike path extension.
I did have a conversation with Ray Hazlett concerning this. He is looking into it. His concern is that he wants to be sure that it prohibits traffic, the traffic it's trying to avoid there. And so we talked quite a bit about possibilities, and he is going to investigate that further.
The flexible versus the?
Yes.
Member Wild?
So when you say this is for a grant, how much of this is, is the 80, 85 the total including the grant, or is this just?
That's for the engineering.
So that's our portion of the grant?
Right.
Okay. So we're getting more money from putting this out?
Right.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Other comments? Ordinance 4706, an ordinance approving revisions to the Comprehensiveness of Alphine Improvement Strategy, the CHIS Grant for the City of Athens and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move that we consider O-4706 under suspension of the rules? This is a resolution of an amendment to the CHIS strategy formulation that needs to be into the Ohio Office of Housing and Community Partnerships very soon in order to facilitate our previously approved grant application.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only on ordinance 47? All those in favor of suspending council rules?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-4706.
Second.
40.
Yes. That's what I said, I thought, O-4706. Anyway, this, this ordinance approves a, an amendment to the CHIS paper that Doug Stanley talked about, and he was here for a public hearing a couple weeks ago, and that he told us that he had submitted this to the state, and the state had given tentative approval. But in order for them to give final approval, they need this ordinance passed by city council approving these amendments. And essentially, the amendment was to lower the projected number of households benefiting from private owner rehabilitation and down payment assistance from two per grant period to one per grant period for the next three years.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4706?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4806, an order, an ordinance authorizing the adoption of an agreement with the Paternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the City of Athens Police Lieutenants Concerning Wages and Working Conditions and Declaring an Emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move that we consider O-4806 under suspension of the rules. This is a contract that has been negotiated and agreed upon by the city and the police lieutenants. Their previous end of contract, their previous contract ended December 11th, 2005, and so it is prudent that we put this new contract in effect as quickly as possible.
Further comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 4806?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O-4806.
Second.
Again, this is a agreement, a labor agreement between the police lieutenants of the Athens Police Force and the City of Athens. The agreement has been on view in city council office. I was going to ask the Large Director if he could give us a few highlights of any changes.
It's essentially a status quo contract with a 4% salary increase in each of, each year with your. year, a three-year agreement with a concession on the lieutenant's part phasing out longevity for new hires, and it's consistent with the contract for the patrol officers and communications officers.
Thank you.
Other, I'm sorry. Other comments on ordinance forty-eight oh six? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. O-49 oh six, an ordinance amending the two thousand and six appropriation ordinance.
Mr. President, this ordinance is a continuation of, or maybe a correction of, an ordinance that we passed several weeks ago regarding interfund transfer approval. And I think the auditor needs to explain it to us better than I can.
Well, usually, in the past, we've always done the interfund transfer ordinance at the same time we do the initial appropriation ordinance for the year in December. And we didn't do it this year. And when you do it at the same time, then you remember to appropriate all this money in your appropriation ordinance. And since we didn't do it, and we knew we needed to make transfers, a lot of these debt fund transfers we do every year, a couple of these were funds we're trying to close out. But we passed the transfer ordinance to transfer them, but we need to appropriate them in the funds before we can transfer them. And that's what this is.
Are there other comments on ordinance forty-nine oh six? Ordinance fifty oh six, an ordinance providing for the issuance of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of water system revenue notes, ninth, two thousand and six renewal by the city of Athens, Ohio, for the purpose of paying litigation cost and renewing notes previously issued for the purpose in declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, the title of this ordinance really explains it. I don't think there's much to add. The auditor, we're not making any payment on principle with this.
Yes, we are, actually. We're making more than we did last year, yeah. You wouldn't have known that. I guess we weren't sure at the last committee meeting exactly how much we were going to pay down. A year ago, we paid down twenty-five thousand on a five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar note, and so we owe five-hundred-thousand dollars this year. We're going to pay down sixty-five thousand dollars. The interest rate will go up for the next year from two-point-seven-five to three-point-five-five, but so we'll bring it down to four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand on our ninth time around here.
Thank you. Other comments? Member Bain?
I'd like to congratulate the citizens. It's their dollar a month at work.
Yes, yes. You're right, Nancy, yeah.
Okay. And I just, because I wasn't involved in this prior to this...
Which will pay for it.
Oh, pay for it, yes. Is this paying basically for a fix? In other words, is this for correction in terms of water quality? What are we paying for here?
This is paying for lawyers and ETA people and dentists.
Twenty years worth.
Twenty years worth of...
Wrangling.
Wrangling.
Okay, so...
A personal annoyance to this, several others on this council.
So this means that we violated some water quality? No.
We never will admit to such a thing.
Sorry.
Nor should we.
Okay. I guess the question is, for whatever this is for, are we currently in compliance with, is this, is this drinking water or wastewater? Drinking water?
It's, what it is, is it's a rectum situation, so that, and under that, under EPA, it says you must dispose of used motor oil, all the things like that. We don't, didn't have any records in the late eighties to do that, and so what they said was, oh, you're a violation, you're automatically fine. We fought for, oh, I don't know, fifteen years on it. And they did find, we did, it was caused by self-reporting of a plume on one of the wells, on our, it was a monitoring well, but it resulted in a, they asked for a two-and-a-half million dollar fine, and that's one of the reasons we fought it for about ten or fifteen years.
Okay.
We settled with a hundred thousand.
I guess my question is, are we currently in compliance with, in terms of our drinking water system with EPA?
We have never, we have never been out of compliance.
Oh, we've never been out of compliance, or, then compliance is not the right word. Are we...
We are sinning no more.
Sinning no more.
And we never sin.
And we never sin, but we're paying for this. However, we don't have any...
I can give you a file cabinet, or you can sit with me for two days, and I'll try to explain it.
No, this is exactly what, what we used to talk about when I worked with the American Water Works Association. So I just wanted to see if, you know, what the current status of the source water quality was.
Excellent. It's always been excellent.
Okay.
If you want, you can always go visit the water plant, talk to Crystal, or somebody for that.
You're an expert, you know. You know, you know.
I just wanted to know what, what we're paying for here in a little more detail.
It says litigation.
Right, right, I know.
Ninety percent of us litigation in here.
I know. But I wanted to see if we'd corrected the problem, if we were...
It's, you have to, we never admitted that there was a problem. The settlement involved the city putting in monitoring for a period of time to prove that there was no problem, that we never said existed. Clear? I mean, it just, it's, it's a situation where the EPA found a technical violation believing that inappropriate materials have been dumped down a drain well at the service garage, which affected the city's water condition. They were never able to prove that it affected the city's water condition, never made an allegation that the city's water was ever in jeopardy.
Okay.
But never backed off the situation. So we, the city ended up putting in a monitoring situation, which as far as I know, has been monitored now for four or five years, and nothing's ever showed up.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, thanks.
Member Wild?
And part of the money spent on this was actually to do testing of the water and the flow of the well field, just, which kind of proved that it couldn't have been us, actually.
Okay.
And that was one of the things that we spent a lot of money on.
Okay. It couldn't have been the city.
Yeah, but the direction, well, that's the question, where it comes from.
Right, okay. I don't know.
And also, given your background, I think that'd be an excellent idea for you to meet with Crystal Knar down at the water treatment plant. I think you would find that very enlightening.
Yes.
And I think of having your expertise as a council member down there would be a great idea.
And I have in my office probably about twenty volumes and three notebooks that you can read through. Rick has a file cabinet.
That's another, that's another point entirely. Okay.
Are there other comments on ordinance fifty oh six? We declared an emergency, but we are not suspending, is that correct?
No, it's due June second, so it goes through three readings, but then it needs to be done right away.
Okay. Under announcements and other business, I did speak with Member Phillips today, who has requested a planning and development committee next time. Member Bain?
I'd like a city services committee meeting next time with three things at least on the agenda, including miscellaneous for the fourth. The water and sewer project for Columbus Road, changes to the utilities billing process recommended by Ray Hazlitt, perhaps a committee of the whole to talk about sticks and leaves and charges, the CFI question. I guess I'd also wish that, maybe it won't be timed this week, but in the report on page five from the Water and Sewer Department, Mayor Abel, there was a comment about security improvements as per assessment recommendations, the first time I've seen those. And in there, I imagine it's Nick Carr says that council has failed to fund the improvements necessary to lessen the city's vulnerability. And I'd like to be on record saying that now that I know that there are things that need to be done, I'd like a recommendation from the administration, maybe not this week, but sometime, what we're going to do of these things in-house, you know, brick up windows at the pumping station, I could go help them with that, right? I mean, there are some things that are pretty straightforward, and you know, are we going to do all of them, or, you know, it seems like this is a big red type, and I'm kind of concerned about it, but we don't set the rates. But if you could come back maybe in a month, tell us what we're going to do in-house and...
I could partially do that, but under the Homeland Security, had to do a water wellhead and plant, security evaluation. I have not even seen the report because I'm not cleared by the federal government to read it. Okay?
Well, then I definitely won't.
As a very limited distribution under Homeland Security, as you may recall, Nancy, about three years ago, I came to the council and asked for thirty thousand because it was a requirement of our, by the federal government, that we do such a study, and the study has been done. I've never seen, I've never read.
Okay.
But you've seen pieces of it, we've done in-house a number of things. The current CDVG grant about railings and such was a part of that. It's a lockdown facility now, we've been doing some changes at the, but they really don't want to discuss security vulnerability in a public meeting, quite honestly.
Well, then, I guess then maybe we better put the eraser on the report and say council doesn't know, so it can't fail to do something it doesn't know about. I mean, Nick Carr, I guess, right?
Sure. People write their reports the way they see it.
Right, well, I'm responding to it as a concerned person. I think none of this is anything that would, I mean, telemetry, we've talked about before, so.
Right.
If they're, I assume then, I don't need to hear in a month, but if you have something you want us to authorize, you'll get to us, right?
Right. Nick is still on medical leave and won't be back till sometime in May, so it'll be after that before I'll be able to get an answer from him.
But I know we've done at least two telemetries, so you know, what would be a third, right?
Well, the telemetry is one that now it's, the technology has changed so much since we last did it, that it will probably be less expensive. Well, we can save that for committee hours.
No, I mean, it doesn't have to be this week, but I just, you know, it seemed a little urgent, and so you had to take the red font off this printer. All right, then I won't feel so urgent. Thank you.
Other, other announcements? Member Bishop?
Next week, we'll have a conversation with council on, it's city information, actually, what citizens would like to be accessible to them, that may include information on the website, the government channel, or any communication issues about information that people would like to bring forward. So that'll be next Monday, mayor's conference room, six P M., and it will be a facilitated dialogue, public discussion. And citizens and city officials are, and university officials are invited. And we'll probably have a communications committee meeting after that, or during the committee meetings.
Member Wild? No. Patterson?
I'd like an arts and recreation committee next week to bring forward ordinances concerning Stroud's Run and the new improved financials, and also miscellaneous on that. And I also wanted to announce, if people didn't get the information in the mail, there's a Conservation Connection tour this weekend with three different sites. But basically, what it is, is showing what we're doing in our area to preserve natural resources. And so there will be experts at the different locations. The actual locations are Carbondale and then the Code Comfort Farm, which is, now there's a map on here, if anyone wanted to come and look at the map, that they don't have it. Also, the information can be obtained from going online to athens.osu.edu, and go to agriculture and natural resources, and then upcoming events. So that is this weekend, Saturday, from one to five. It's a drive yourself, so you go to whichever ones of the locations you wish to go to and see what information they have at that particular place. One of them is focused on water, that's, that is the, one in Carbondale, and the other are focused on forestry and conventional farming.
We'll have a transportation, transportation committee meeting next week. One of the items on the agenda will be the paving of Union Street from Jefferson to Schaefer. And while I did want to talk about the parking lease down at the fairgrounds, we're going to hold off until we get more information about that. So we'll talk about that, not next committee meeting, but the following. And then I'll also have miscellaneous on there. And I wanted to make one announcement about the Athens Earth Day Celebration, which is this Saturday, beginning at ten A M. uptown on Union Street. It goes through till about six P M., I believe.
You can go right from there to the tour.
Well, first, member Sands?
Mr. President, certainly we'll have it short, I need some personal...
Always.
I said short.
Okay, no other announcements? Now, an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight? Seeing none, item number ten on our agenda is an executive session to discuss pending litigation. And after we come out of executive session, there will be no other discussions other than an adjournment. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? I'm sorry. And who all would we like to be there? Law Director Hunter?
Well, myself, the mayor, and you.
Okay. Law Director, mayor, and auditor?
I move we go into executive session, including the law director, the mayor, and the...
Okay, second. Member Flowers? Yes.
Aye. Sorry.
Patterson, Sands?
Aye.
Aye.
Bishop, and Wild. We will take about ten minutes till eight-thirty for people in the audience wishing to ask council any questions, but when the clock's hit eight-thirty, we need to ask you to leave so that we can have our executive session. Thank you.